Good evening and welcome. I call the May 17, 2016 City Commission Meeting to order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
Here.
And the first thing on our agenda tonight are an announcement for our proclamation for Police Week. And our Officer Stein is here to receive that. So if you want to join me at the podium. And this is very appropriate for you to receive this proclamation because Officer Sean Stein is our Pickwa Patrol Officer of the Year. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Pickwa Police Department. And whereas there have been 15,725 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2016, resulting in approximately 13,824 injuries. And whereas since the first reported death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and died in the line of duty, including three members of the Pickwa Police Department: Lieutenant Noah Stuta Baker, Patrolman Jan Mulder II, and Detective Robert Taylor. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 252 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 123 officers killed in 2015 and 129 officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 28th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2016. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 15 through the 21st. Note, because May 15, 2016 falls on a Sunday, some events will take place before the official dates of Police Week 2016. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And now therefore be it resolved in that the City of Pickwa formally designates May 15 to 21, 2016 as Police Week in the City of Pickwa, Ohio, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Thank you so much for your service and for all you do for our community and all those others that are a part of the department. We really appreciate it.
On behalf of the entire department, you have our thanks as well.
Thank you for keeping us safe. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And now we need a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Need a roll call?
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin, or Mayor Hines, I'm sorry.
Aye. You know, and I'm aware that there may be some announcements that I did not call for. Is there one announcement? Why don't we hold off and we'll do that announcement and then we'll move into executive session. I apologize.
Okay. Hi, my name's Julia Shong and I'm president of the Pickwa Key Club. And for those who don't know what Key Club is, it's basically a junior quannas club for high school members to join. And we do various service projects. And one of them that I'm going to speak about is the bike rodeo. So... But before I move on, I would like to thank the Commission for allowing me to come share about our event that we just celebrated. So what we did was host a bike rodeo on April 23. And what the bike rodeo did was serve as a teaching opportunity for younger kids. And it was held at Pickwa Central High Intermediate. And we educated the youth about public safety and how to ride a bike properly and wear a helmet and the typical bicycle safety, like regulations. So... But that would not be possible without all the volunteers. And I would like to thank the Pickwa Fire Department, the Pickwa Police Department, and Highway Patrol and Pickwa City Schools for providing the parking lot for the event. And the various volunteers, Bike Pickwa, South Neighborhood Association, and LCI's. Jeff volunteered as a rock dog dodge skill, sorry. And Jim explained the skill sets to the volunteers. So they were basically the... Led people to educate the kids. And the amount of registered riders we had was an estimate of about 20 to 6 to 30. So that's better than none. And we are planning to hold another bike rodeo next year, sometime in the spring, we're hoping. But that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Julia, on behalf of the city, and I was there with my son who took part of that rodeo. It was a fabulous morning. It was wonderfully put together. And thank you for all that you all do as the Key Club and in all the other ways that you do volunteer here in our community. You are appreciated and you are an example of some of the good stuff here in our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Then we will move to executive session. Okay, we are back in our regular session and we move on with our agenda.
Yeah, two items on the consent agenda tonight: approval of the minutes from the May 3, 2016 regular Pickwa City Commission meeting. And the second one is a resolution appointing Mayor Hines to the governing board of the Pickwa Improvement Corporation.
Okay. Do we have any questions about the consent agenda?
Move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. And now we move on to old business. The first thing we have is ordinance number 4-16. This is our third reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 51 of the Pickwa Municipal Code Sewers.
We'll have Ms. Wall provide the staff report tonight.
Thank you. This is again the result of a standard audit by the Ohio EPA. All of your changes are on page four of the ordinance, which changed the city's code to be in compliance with the Ohio Administrative Code at the recommendation of the EPA.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Do we have any questions from the public on this ordinance? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance number 4-16.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, ordinance number 4-16 is adopted. And now moving on to ordinance number 5-16. Again, this is a third reading.
An ordinance authorizing the submission of a proposed amendment to the Pickwa Charter Section 4, the Commission.
This... This charter amendment is before you on a third reading. If approved tonight, it will go forward to the Board of Elections, which would then put it on the ballot in November for a vote by the citizens. This amends the Charter section regarding when the city is permitted to go into executive session. It adds three sections. One is to discuss security or emergency protocols that the city may be involved in. Two is to discuss economic development issues as defined by the Ohio Revised Code. And the third addition would be, for any reasons as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code, that applies to municipalities. And that would allow you to go into executive session in the future without having to continue to amend the charter.
Okay. Any questions from the Commission? Do we have any comments from the public?
We'll move to adopt ordinance number 5-16.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 5-16 is adopted. And now we move on to our new business. The first is ordinance number 6-16, and this is an emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Pickwa.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. This ordinance, as the mayor just indicated, is an emergency. The reason for the emergency where I'm requesting the waiver of the three reading rule is that this is the supplement to our code that adopts the tax code, the new tax code that became into effect January 1 of this year, as well as amended the old tax code, both because of requirements passed by the state of Ohio. The reason for the emergency is again, it's been in effect since January 1 as required by state law.
Any questions from the Commission?
I move to waive the three reading rule.
Second.
Okay. Let's have a roll call for that motion.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Okay. And now we move on to... Do you have any public comment about that ordinance?
I move to adopt ordinance 6-16.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call then to pass this ordinance?
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Okay. The ordinance number 6-16 is adopted. And now moving on to ordinance number 7-16. This is a first reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 152, Historic Preservation of the City of Pickwa Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Schmiesing will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This item is related to the need to amend the boundaries of the downtown historic district. The purpose for this request is in response or related to an application or an interest in applying for community development block grant funds that would provide for property owners to be able to make improvements to buildings within the downtown historic district. The historic district was first defined in 1999, at the time we initially applied for the same funds that are being sought now, and then amended in 2002. The boundaries more or less were established to capture not only the historic fabric of the downtown, but also to make certain to capture those properties where there are property owners that have indicated an interest in participating in the funding opportunity. So by amending the map as presented, we would be expanding the downtown historic district a very modest distance, two properties to the north along Main Street, and then a couple minor adjustments along Ash Street, and then south along Main Street to capture the area that's referred to as the Riverfront Redevelopment Area. These modifications to the map boundaries would capture two additional properties that have indicated an interest in participating in this funding opportunity if we're successful in securing the block grant dollars, and also include properties that would be eligible candidates for the funding should they choose to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Schmiesing. Any questions from the Commission?
I'm just curious about the buildings on the north end of the area here. The one looks like the Old Beauty School building. Is that correct? What is that?
The one little bump out at the corner of Ash, just north of Ash along Wayne Street, is the building that you're referring to?
Yeah.
There is an individual who's purchased the building and has an interest in renovating it. So because there's interest in there being renovation of the property, we thought it would be helpful if it could be included in the historic district and potentially be eligible for funds.
The buildings don't have to be historically significant?
Historically significant is...
I mean, that building was probably built in the 50s.
Something of a subjective observation. It's not so much the historical significance of the particular building, but how it relates to the overall fabric of the downtown. So being in the transitional area between the Caldwell Historic District and the downtown proper, it is suitable to be included within the historic district.
And then the other property on Main Street to the north would be the John Berkey's Building, which, and then the house next to it, which are probably old.
Correct.
So they would fit into that category?
Yes.
And then the one to the west, the farthest west, would be that yellow building?
Correct.
Is that what that is?
It's the large structure to the south of the YWCA that's in dire need of improvement. So by making it within the boundary, should they choose to participate, there could be some funding to assist with the needs there.
Okay.
Back towards the Beauty School area where you've got the little bump out area there. The buildings to the north on that same block are kind of old and historic looking. Is there advantage to not just continue that out? I mean, or not?
Well, I think at some point in the future, perhaps as we begin to discuss form-based code and updating our zoning code, we should be taking a look at what really is the historic district boundaries of our downtown. What we have here, I would say more accurately, represent a target area. That is, they were initially laid out to capture properties that had an interest in participating in the grant funding. So while it captures historic properties, I don't believe it's inclusive of all those properties that one might consider historic in the downtown. Not hearing of any interest or knowing of particular activity on those properties you refer to that would make one believe that there's a likelihood they would participate in the grant. It's disadvantaged... It's not advantageous to us to include them. As part of the application, you're seeking to achieve the highest ratio of participants to properties possible. So the more properties within the district that are actually participating, the better our application looks. So if you include properties that don't participate, it hurts our application. Does that make sense?
Yeah, except for the fact that the two buildings not included are more historic than the ones you're including. I mean...
Yeah, yeah. And you could continue north to the old library and, you know, there's a lot of arguments you can make well beyond the boundaries that are there now. And again, I would just go back to 1999 and say that they were originally defined more as a target area than a historic area. I think you could do a better job of defining boundaries that capture the historic area in the downtown than what's here. Unfortunately, that's the way the map's been labeled and that's what's necessary to satisfy the application requirements.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Do we have any comments from the public on this ordinance?
Al Flootman, 525 Harney. I'm just confused. I'm sort of familiar with some historic districts. When you talk about those that choose to participate, I'm confused because I lived in historic section of Centerville and they were very strict. You didn't have a choice. My neighbor re-roofed his garage and he got fined because he used modern shingles and did not use historically approved shingles. By mapping out this whole area, are all those people going to be subject to special regulations for what they can do? Like if they want to paint it, there has to be historical colors? Or if they want to re-roof it, they have to use... You know, are there going to be regulations?
There's not mandatory requirements. Some historic districts have mandatory requirements and you would be subject to whatever choose. This is not the case. And instead of, as Mr. Schmiesing was pointing out, this is not necessarily so much historic as it is grant application for helping some of those buildings within this area who want to participate in the grant program to have some access to funding. But we don't have a mandatory architectural review for that.
That's what I want to make sure.
Overseas, I've been places where, you know, if you want to change the color of your house, you had to come before the board. But this is not that case. We don't have that type of architectural review.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, this will stand as our first reading for ordinance number 7-16. And now moving on to ordinance number 8-16. This is a first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the submission of a proposed amendment to the Pickwa Charter Section 5, President of the Commission, Mayor.
I'll call on Ms. Wall again.
Thank you. This ordinance comes before you at the request of the Commission. With the past election and several others in the past, there has been great confusion, it appears, in how our mayor is currently elected. If you recall, the charter language says you have to be elected commissioner before you can be elected mayor. But we've had at least three elections, not in the far past, where the person winning mayor did not win commissioner. And so the public clearly didn't have an understanding of you have to vote for the same person. As a result of maybe trying to clear this up, the Commission held a work session. Each commissioner appointed one person from his award. That committee met with myself. We reviewed 60 charters across the state of Ohio, as well as looked at the past election results and the numbers, and discussed what would be the best proposal for trying to clarify the way the mayor is elected within the city. That committee presented three options to the City Commission in a work session. And as a result of that, it was decided to go with the option that is before you in the ordinance. This would amend Section 5 of the Charter. It actually simplifies it a great deal and eliminates a lot of language. It would state that the city commissioners would elect its mayor at the first meeting in January, as well as the vice mayor. It would begin in 2018 and every two years thereafter, so it would not affect the current mayor. She would complete her term. And then for the next mayor, the Commission would be deciding who its mayor would be at that first meeting in January. And this is actually how it was pre-1975. And in 1975, there was a charter amendment to go to the current way of electing by the public, the mayor, but you also had to be elected commissioner. So this reverts back to that original way. Again, this would have to go to the Board of Elections if approved by the Commission and would be on the November ballot for a vote by the electorate.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Do you have any questions or comments from the public?
Again, Al Flootman, 525. I'm glad you're going to put it to the vote. I don't like this ordinance. City of Pickwa has a council management form of municipal government, which is the most popular around. And the system was designed to combat corruption and unethical activity. In this most recent mayoral election, obviously Mayor Hines won. It was very, very close, okay? Maybe people are confused, but I believe you already handled that. We've had, to the best of my knowledge, it's only happened once where somebody was... Since I've been here, more than... Like I remember one, Dave Martin. But he ran for mayor. That was it. You very appropriately put on all your signs, vote for Hines for commissioner and mayor. I think this takes the rights of the vote of the citizens for the mayor away. Again, if you pass this ordinance, and in the future, let's say, two years down when we have the next election, let's say you same five commissioners hold your seats. Mayor Hines decides she wants to continue being mayor. Based on what we've seen, the majority of the citizens of Pickwa want her to be mayor. Assuming she continues to do a good job, they probably want her to continue to be mayor. Now, I look at the composition of the five members and I note that three members are either men or identify as male. That could lead to a conflict if they said, "Okay, last time was close. Let's get rid of Mayor Hines." I don't want to imply sexism, but if this ordinance passes and if that happens, I think you're going to have thousands of citizens upset. I don't think confusion is a reason for changing the ordinance. But I am glad you're going to put it on the ballot.
In response to your statements, I feel that the job of mayor is just by title. The mayor has no more power than any one of us commissioners. The only thing that she can do that we can't do, she can perform a wedding ceremony. She's not a tiebreaker. She has... Everybody is the same. Now, if she was mayor and said as mayor, not commissioner, she was a tiebreaker or whatever, I could see something to that. But the way it is now...
Okay.
She runs the meeting and she can perform.
And yet you have several people who run wanting to be mayor. So there's... Obviously, they don't say, "I want to be commissioner." They actually run for mayor. Now Beaver Creek, okay? They're proposing an ordinance with the citizens going to vote on. They currently, the resident... They vote on commissioners and the commissioner with the most votes is the mayor. That doesn't work. If I was going to run for commission, I didn't want to be mayor, I would put up a whole lot less signs than the rest of you, okay? So they said, "That's not working." What they want to do, they want to adopt what we're doing, where now you vote for the commissioners and those say they want to run for mayor, say announce they're going to run for mayor, and then the citizens get to vote for mayor. So I think the system works. Like I said, it's the most popular form of government. Even large cities like El Paso, Charlotte, Dallas have that form of government. I don't see a need to change because some citizens are confused. I think some of the incidents we've run into, I know when Dave Martin ran, I learned a lot. That was the first time I heard about it, but I know it now. And like I said, now Mayor Hines was very smart. She said commissioner and mayor, okay? So that's just my two cents. And I agree, she doesn't have any more power, but if she wanted to be mayor, why does everybody else want to be mayor too?
On the other hand, we all speak to each other. We all have a good relationship. If somebody had an interest in the mayor, they would express this to one another and we would discuss it. And it is not stonewalling anybody. I think this is the way, the correct way to do it. And speaking of Mr. Martin, this was his suggestion.
Oh, yeah?
This was...
Well, because he got burned, yeah.
He didn't get burned. It's just the way the system was.
Okay, right. So... But again, it was confusing. But I'm glad at least you're going to put it on the ballot, okay? Because if the citizens vote for this ordinance, then, you know, they can't comply.
Right.
You know, I would like to say one thing, though. As far as the citizens voting for mayor, I believe three of the last five elections, the person who became mayor was not voted mayor because of the confusion on the ballot.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Is that correct?
Yes, it is. That's one of the reasons.
So the voters are not voting for the mayor correctly because there's confusion. Yeah, so, so the voters are not voting for the Mayor correctly because there's confusion, so this would take that out, and that's why we think it's better, because, again, three out of the last five elections, the person who became Mayor did not win the Mayor vote. So that's what we're looking at, is eliminating confusion. I know when Lucy has always run, she always said, vote twice. We try to get that out as much as we can, but for whatever reason, it's not getting after. So, again, three out of five of the last elections, and that's a lot of people voting for someone who's not getting the job they're voting for. So that's what we're looking at, and that's why we're thinking this is a better way.
Like I said, if you put it on the ballot, at least, you know.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it has to be on the ballot, but that's why we think it's a better way than the current system.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bradley Beringer, Mound Street, Pickwa. I was one of the ones that was in favor of this, because as Joe said, the last three, three out of the last five elections have been split, and I think yours was too, was it not, Casey?
Yes.
I just have a question regarding this ordinance. What is going to happen if we vote, continually vote the same person as Mayor? Now, I could see that happening the way this ordinance is written right now. When I suggested this, I said, TIP City does this right now. This is the way TIP City elects their Mayor. But they have it written in their ordinance, that they can only serve two consecutive terms, and then they must sit out for a while to allow some other, some other Commissioner the opportunity to be Mayor, whether they want it or not. Are we going to do that in this ordinance?
No.
I think it should be done, because if, what you're going to run into is you're going to vote the same person Mayor, why even have, why even have the system then? If you're just going to vote the same person Mayor? It allows the other four an opportunity for the position.
Every two years, you would have an opportunity to run if you, for Mayor, so it would not necessarily be the same person. And some of us don't, would ever, ever want to be Mayor. So, I mean, it just, you've got to have someone who wants to do it, and the opportunity would be there every two years.
But you're kind of opening yourself up without at least some kind of limit to have a perpetual Mayor in one person. You see what I'm saying?
With having a perpetual person, if she's doing a great job.
And I agree with you, Bill. I agree with you on that. If they're doing a good job, but I think everybody should have an equal opportunity.
Well, we have that, at the, at the end of the two years, nominations will be here at the Commission, and we will nominate, you can either accept or whatever.
Okay, okay.
If I could add that the, this is a City Manager Commission form of government.
Right.
The committee did review the sixty charters. This was the most popular form for this type of government because of the issue that the Mayor is only procedural administrative, there's no voting authority, there's no difference in authority on this Commission. The Mayor itself, that position has no authority. There's just one Commission.
Right.
Each Commissioner has no different power than the other, and so, in those charters, I did not see term limits, for the most part.
Did you have to include TIP City's Charter among them?
I'm sure I did.
Because that, that is...
And, so when you have this form of government, when the Mayor is only leading the Commission and performing, serving proclamations and performing marriage ceremonies, it's not a concern, so there's no issue of corruption, because the Mayor has no independent authority.
Right, and I'm not floating that, I'm not floating that as a, as a reason for it. I just know that, I would at least like to see some other people on the Commission have that opportunity.
We would have that opportunity every two years.
Every two years with a nomination.
Or we would have the opportunity to not be Mayor or Vice Mayor.
And that's fair enough, it's fair enough.
Nominate yourself, you're there.
Okay. Would you nominate yourself, Bill?
I've been there, no.
Well, that's all I had, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Thomas Beck, fifteen oh seven, Garfield. I'm relatively new to Pickwa, been here about twelve years or so. I don't know, William here might know, he's, he's been around for a while. Why was it changed originally in nineteen seventy-five, I believe she said? What prompted that change?
Interestingly enough, we cannot find the original language of this Charter. To our best knowledge, we think there was a fire, and so not even the library has this. But just in talking to the community members who remember the Charter change, it's because the Commission elected a Mayor through vote, and the public didn't like who they elected. So the public said, we want to change it.
All right, fair enough. That could happen again.
Yeah, but then I think the public at the time didn't realize that the job was actually powerless.
Right. I mean, I know it's more of a figures, figurehead type of position and all that, that could change down the road, too.
Yeah, well, this job here, it, the only difference is you get a hundred dollars more a month.
Right.
And you can perform weddings.
You got it, yeah, and you got to show up and cut ribbons and all that fun stuff, too. Yep. I'm glad the Commission's getting along. Like William said, I've been around governments for thirty-plus years, I videotaped for another community here in the county. I've missed about four meetings in thirty years. I can tell you, Commissions and councils do not always get along, and I've seen them. There was a time when they had to appoint, they appointed the Mayor themselves, and they weren't getting along at the time. It was not a pretty picture, and it was very bad optics for the community. So, you know, this isn't a bed of roses. I think it's an education, you know, it's, the electorate needs to educate itself, and it's not just here locally, it's on the national level, too, without getting too political. I think just because, pardon me, the electorate is dumb, so to speak, sometimes, I don't think that's still an excuse to take something away from the people and putting it in the hands of a few. It's a slippery slope. I get what you're trying to do, and it might work very well here in Pickwa, Ohio, but I just have to say, it's, I see it as a slippery slope and something we just need to guard against. I'd much rather see the community be more active in its government and what's going on in town, and, and know how things work and have a better understanding. I think we all would benefit from that. Thanks.
I've been on this council, this is my fourth term, and I've sat up here, and one of the, one time it was quite controversial, however, it wasn't one time that we never had a non-harmonious meeting among ourselves.
Well, that, that's great.
Because, because we all had this same interest for the city.
But I surely hope it stays that way, because I've, I've seen it break down to where that it becomes personal, and I haven't seen that here yet, and I hope I never do.
You never will see it here.
I certainly hope that's the case. You know, at that point, if I think it's breaking down, that's when I'll, I might consider hopping up there myself. I considered it, I considered it this last election cycle, my employer told me, no, you can't do that. I'm not with that employer anymore.
You know, you can have my seat in four years, because I really didn't want it this time.
I'm in your ward, sir.
Thank you. You know, I have to say that we have had quite a few third graders here at the city, and I'll tell you, the third grade teachers are doing an excellent job of teaching them about how our government works, because I asked the question, who runs the city? And they knew it was the City Manager. So I think we need to get our third grade teachers out there to help the rest of the...
Absolutely.
So, yep, so thank you very much.
If I could add one more thing about the education piece, I think we all agree there isn't really controversy here, but the reason for that is because of the way we elect our Commissioners. There is no partisan race here.
That's very good.
And that's why you have conflict in the other cities, not because of how the Mayor's elected, but because partisan politics is involved. So that part is not here.
The council I was referring to is not a partisan council, but I agree, that would not be a good thing.
Okay.
Well, also, you know, it was brought up to me that people were concerned that they weren't able to vote for the Mayor, but if you vote for the Commissioners, you are voting for the Mayor. So if you accept any of the Commissioners who are eligible to be Mayor, which would be all of us, then that vote would surely count.
Any other comments on this ordinance? Well, this will stand as our first reading of ordinance number eight dash sixteen. Moving on to resolution number R dash sixty-nine dash sixteen.
A resolution retaining the services Haran to provide health insurance consulting services for the City of Pickwa.
Ms. Barton will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. The City of Pickwa has partnered with Haran for the past six years, since June of two thousand and ten, and during that time, we've received two years of zero percent increases in our premiums, and for the two thousand and sixteen benefit year, we received an eight percent reduction in our premiums. That saved the city a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the previous year, and it also allowed us to go to four-tier rates, which benefited the employees. Haran has asked for a very modest increase in their fee, and they get a consulting fee rather than commission, because then that way, they can go to any insurance company, and we can be assured that they are acting in our best interest. So their consulting fee is going up eighty-three dollars a month. So I think that it's, it's a good deal for us, considering that we've probably already recouped their three-year fee.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions from the public or comments from the public on this resolution?
Move to adopt resolution R sixty-nine dash sixteen.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number R dash sixty-nine dash sixteen passes. And now we have resolution number R dash seventy dash sixteen.
A resolution authorizing a contract with Studio Graphics to perform a professional design services for the citywide wayfinding project.
Mr. Schmusing.
Thank you. This resolution is to authorize the City Manager to enter into a contract with Studio Graphics for what would be Phase Two of a citywide wayfinding project. You might recall, last year, we commenced with Phase One of the wayfinding sign project. The first phase was set up to define the framework for what a wayfinding signage plan would look like in our community, and to begin to develop concepts for what that wayfinding signage would include. That information was then able to provide us with the, with the insights necessary to determine which direction, if you will, we wanted to go with things. After receiving that information and being able to process what the alternatives looked like, it became evident to us that our best course of action would be to proceed with a Phase Two that would further develop the concept into design development phase, so that we have actual signage plans and details, and we could use that then to have bid documents that would allow us to go forward with implementation of the framework and the recommendations in the planning document. So this is, again, this would be Phase Two. Studio Graphics was also the consultant on Phase One. While neither of the contracts exceed the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold, this, obviously, the two combined would take us over that amount, so we thought it appropriate to be before the City Commission this evening to ask your approval of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Schmusing. Any questions from the Commission?
Can you talk a little bit about specifically what signs we would be putting up and where and those kind of things?
Yeah, the, so the framework completed in Phase One included a fair amount of stakeholder engagement, so citizens and persons of the community were invited to comment on their interest and their thoughts about where there was need to provide residents or tourist visitors to the community with some additional insight as to how to find the destinations within our community and be able to travel and get to those locations. The framework develops a palette of sign options, if you will, that range from a smaller, more traditional directional sign that you might see by the roadway, all the way up to a gateway or an entry sign that you might see at the edge of the community near a main entryway into town. And then everything in between, including signage that would be pedestrian scale and more appropriate for a downtown environment. It gives you those, the menu of options, if you will, and begins to identify where the appropriate locations would be. And then from that, this next phase will help us identify some phasing for implementation of those signs. It's not something that would happen in one fell swoop, rather, it would be incremental in terms of, you might start with the gateway signs and then move to the next tier and focus on directional signage to parks or destinations and those sorts of things.
And I think in addition to that, would allow us to design historic district neighborhood signs, street signs, park signs, the entrance signs and so forth. So it gives us a wide variety of opportunities to really, really upscale and brand the community in a fashion that I think is going to be very, very, very nice for the community and very impressive for people coming into Pickwa.
When this signage is, is agreed upon, then would it be, would the signs be made in-house, or would that, we would have that ability, or would you have the...
I think we have some ability to do some signage in-house, but probably some would be outside, too, so.
But we would have to go beyond this contract to produce the signs?
When we purchase signs, yes.
This would just be for the artwork?
Correct, location, all those type things, where they should go, what they should look like, what they should be made of, all the specifications necessary. There are some probably we can do in-house, and we will, but some will have to come from actual sign manufacturers.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Any comments from the public on this resolution?
I'll move to adopt resolution number R dash seventy dash sixteen.
Second.
Can we have a roll call on this resolution, please?
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number R dash seventy dash sixteen passes. And now we have resolution number R dash seventy-one dash sixteen.
A resolution approving the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, Nature Works twenty-third round application for the Moat Park restroom renovation project, and authorizes the City Manager to submit applications to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
I'll ask Ms. Reese to provide the staff report.
Thanks, Gary. The City will be applying for Round Twenty-three of Nature Works' funding this year through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for renovating the restrooms at the Moat Community Center. This particular grant program provides up to seventy-five percent reimbursement, and then the remaining twenty-five percent is match money coming from the City's Streets Department. Each county is assigned a certain allocation of this Round Three Nature Works' funding. Miami County's allocation this year is only a little over twenty-four thousand, compared to last year, which was a little over seventy-six thousand dollars. So you can see the significant reduction. The restrooms at Moat Community Center were built in nineteen sixty-three and are the original restrooms in that building. I have included some photos in your packet, if you haven't been there recently, to see the condition of these restrooms. The total project cost is a little over twenty-eight thousand dollars, and we will be requesting twenty-one thousand three hundred from the grant, and then the match money will be coming back, or coming from the City. And it actually works out to be a seventy-five, twenty-five split. The application is due June first of this year. We should be notified in the fall if we are funded. Again, this project will not move forward unless we do receive this grant application. If you refer to your enclosed cost estimate, you'll see the detailed renovations that will be made to the restrooms. The two stalls in both the men's and the women's restrooms will remain, however, the one will be ADA compliant. There'll be new toilets, there'll be one new sink, that will be ADA compliant in each restroom. There'll be new interior and exterior entrance doors, new drywall that will be painted, new flooring and ceiling tile. Electrical repairs will be just done to the bathrooms only. There'll be new lighting throughout the restroom area, and the hallway as well will be remodeled, including new flooring, ceiling tile, drywall that will be painted. And then if we refer to Page Nine of the cost estimate, you'll see a recap of each one of those items. And the total cost, again, is a little over twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any questions about this resolution from the Commission?
Now, can they come back and say, we'll fund ten, ten thousand, or is it all or nothing?
It's all or nothing.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is it, is it a good idea to apply for the whole county's amount?
Just so, to answer your question, we've received the whole amount before.
Oh, we have?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Let's do it.
I move to adopt resolution R seventy-one dash sixteen.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 opposed? Resolution number R dash seventy-one dash sixteen passes. And now we're on to resolution number R dash seventy-two dash sixteen.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate.
Mr. Sommer will provide staff report.
Good evening. This resolution would authorize the City Manager to sell the city-owned property known as One Ten East Ash Street to the Pickwa Improvement Corporation. Pickwa Improvement Corporation is a community improvement corporation authorized by However By's Code, whose sole purpose is to advance, encourage, and promote the industrial, economic, and commercial development within the City of Pickwa. Pickwa Improvement Corporation... The Pickwa Improvement Corporation desires to control this property to facilitate future economic development. Sale price of the property is $56,500.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sommer? Do we have any comments from the public on this resolution?
I'll move to adopt resolution number R dash seventy-two dash sixteen.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number R dash seventy-two dash sixteen passes. And now we come to the point for public comment. Okay, if not, we will move on to our city manager's report.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to remind everyone, this Friday is the Taste of the Arts. Takes place in downtown Pickwa from 5:00 to 9:00. We're hoping for nice weather and a really good crowd, so look forward to seeing you there. The Pickwa Tourism Council, Pickwa Public Library, and Main Street Pickwa are partnering to offer a, a history of transportation walking tour. That'll be on Saturday, May 21st, starting at 10:30 a.m., beginning at Lock Nine Park. So, some of these tours have been really good, so if you're interested in going to that. And just a final reminder that we have openings on our Tree Committee and Stormwater Management Committee for citizen members, if anyone's interested in applying.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any other questions that the commission might have.
Okay. If not, we'll start down here with Commissioner Vogt.
Well, I was going to think of something, but now I'm really happy to share.
Well, now, you want me to start down here?
No, I'm fine. I'm fine. There's one thing, I'm looking at the agenda, and I probably shouldn't even mention it at this time. I probably shouldn't, but they had a phone call, but could we get our agenda page numbered?
The answer to that is yes.
You know, because I'm on it down at MBPRC, it's a lot more than, and then, on the front of it, it's, has the item, gives the page number, you can go right to it. You don't have to...
Oh, you mean the page number throughout the entire manual?
Yeah. Don't our printer have that capability? Look at it.
Well, we, we, we'll look at that, because the documents come in so differently. I'll look at it. I'll look at it.
Well, you know, it's just a matter of convenience, it's not life or death. I just thought it would be a lot easier.
We can give you segments for your notebook, though, if you want to do that.
Well, I got that, too. Driving through the city, we are still blowing our grass into the street. And it don't seem to be getting any better. I don't know, I think that the law director is working on some legislation to fix that for us. So, in the meantime, blow your grass back into your yard, sweep it up, put it in a can, whatever. It does not belong in the curb and the sewer. It's costing you money in the long run, rather than the convenience of blowing it into the street, because that's what your stormwater runoff is for, things like that. So, get a grip on it. Let's step up and blow it back in the yard. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Wilson?
I want to congratulate Diane Fox for being Teacher of the Year this year. I did receive one complaint about it, basically asking why it took them so long to give her that award. So, she's very deserving of that. Also, if you are going to Taste of the Arts, which if you haven't been there, you should, and if you've been there, you will be back. The, the planters have been planted this year. They look really nice, and they're done by the Greenleaf Garden Club. And the, the area by the Gentilly statue down on the square is planted as well, and that's done by the Four Seasons Garden Club. And they don't just magically appear, these flowers. They are, a lot of ladies who are very, very dedicated every year to, to do that on their own, on their own dime. So, I just appreciate all the ladies who do that, and when you're downtown this weekend or this summer, take a look at their work, because I assume they'll keep getting bigger. So, yeah, that's all I have.
You know, and it's interesting, I saw them down from Cracker Barrel. They literally are lying on that hill putting flowers in, so really doing a great job to make our city so pretty, so, thanks.
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. It is a lot of work. Commissioner Terry?
Well, the downtown planters were planted this Monday, also by the beautification committee of the, of Main Street Pickwa. So, and those, those things are provided by donations from the public, and so they received a, a good response about that. And I think those planters really do a lot also to make our downtown look a lot better. And we need to thank those people that worked on that. And, and that includes the city of Pickwa Street Department, who got the beds ready and also, I think, placed the flowers. That's all I have.
Okay, great. I had my first walk with the mayor yesterday evening in Shawnee, and it was a wonderful success. Commissioner Martin joined me, as well as quite a few folks from the city, and we had a good group that walked around and talked to a lot of the neighbors there, and even some of the children had to show us their playground and made some suggestions of some changes there. So, it was a wonderful way just to get out and to meet our citizens, and I'm looking forward to moving into Ward Two next, and I'll be talking with Commissioner Vogt and folks in that neighborhood. If there's certain areas you want us to walk in, obviously, a couple of hours, we can't cover everything, but we will try to hit the areas that are needed. So, if you live in Ward Two and there's a certain area you want us to walk in, please let me know, and we'll make sure that that's where we start. Also, if there's certain city workers that it would be helpful to be part of that walk. When I was in Shawnee previously and talking to folks, having streets and having the parks, the streets, Public Works Department, it was important for those people and also stormwater. So, we had those folks with us for the walking last night, and we will do similar things in other wards as people ask for other people in the city that would be helpful to answer those questions. So, thanks for all those who joined us last night. Also, I want to remind people, we now have a community calendar, thanks to positively promoting Pickwa and Main Street Pickwa. The information is on Facebook, and it is, and it is also out there in a variety of other ways, but it is pickwocommunitycalendar.com. If you are involved in any events in the city, there is an event tab that you click on in order to send your information there. And our hope is that everybody, as they're planning events in our city, will look at that, so we don't overpopulate certain days and kind of spread out the wonderful events that we have. It is much easier to do it through the link than email. If you email it, it will take a little more time to get it up on the account, on the calendar to be active, but if you submit it via the link on the calendar, it will be on there much quicker. Also, this past Saturday was the Just Us Concert at Pickwa High School with the high school show choir and also the, the Audio Hype Band, and it was a wonderful, wonderful celebration, as it is every year. So, I just lift up the wonderful gifts of Thomas, Tom Westfall and those, those children, and just, I mean, it was amazing. It was a wonderful evening. Again, just thanks to all those that came out for our community cleanup. We always have Girl Scouts and a variety of other folks that come out to help on that day, and we're done so much quicker. We're supposed to go until noon, but we tend to get things done by 10:00 or 10:30, so good work for our citizens that day. I also was able to be part of some elder day celebrations over the past week, and enjoyed working with the little children out at Edison, and then also the sixth graders out at Fort Hill Cemetery. So, that was a good time as well. And just want to let folks know that there is an event happening in, on July 8th and 9th at the Miami County Fairground. It's called Hope Over Heroin. It is an effort throughout Miami County to help address the heroin issue here in our community. It is being led by many churches, not only in our community, but throughout Miami County. And I know that Officer Jamison has also been working on this as well. So, I encourage you to put those dates on your calendar. It is a weekend of music, a weekend of just really talking about the issue and also helping people find treatment that are looking for treatment. So, July 8th and 9th at the Miami County Fairgrounds. And then also, just, just to mention our school tours that we had, we had some wonderful third graders up here in our seats that did a great job doing mock commission meetings, and we will be in good hands when it comes to their turn to come up here and to, to be in those positions. So, if there's not anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.